How y'all doing today?
We're doing very nicely.
Who gets the honors?
Okay.
Alright. We just window dressing now, so. Want to make sure that we, I just, um, get started off if we could. Okay, sure. Alright, we always, uh, just take the time to honor, um, a lot of the civic organizations, the AKAs, just like we have honored several of the other, uh, Greek organizations in the past, do a tremendous amount of community service and community work, and we want to acknowledge them, uh, for their presence and for all of the work that they do in the community. So, on behalf of Cleveland City Council, we want to offer this to you, and then please make any remarks, and then I do want to hear from my colleague, Councilwoman Stephanie House, who is one of the proud ranks of AKAs, okay? If we could, thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. You know what? We're so excited to be here because in...
Is that for today?
Yeah.
It wouldn't matter. I, I don't remem-- I remember reading it, but, because it just, it, really, I don't approve them, uh, the council president does, so there's not an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. There won't be an issue.
Oh, I, I stopped, okay.
Santana. You have a seat. She's back there. Okay. Not a problem. Okay.
I got a, I got a, I got a quorum?
Yep.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Griffin.
Here.
Bishop.
Here.
Conwell. Gray. Hairston.
Here.
Harsh.
Here.
House.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Casey.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
McCormack.
Present.
Polensic.
Present.
Santana.
Present.
Slyth.
Present.
Spencer.
Present.
Starr.
Star.
You have a quorum, Mr. President?
Thank you. Will everyone rise for a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please dispense with the journal.
By Councilmember House, that the reading of the minutes of the last meeting be dispensed with the journal approved, seconded by Councilmember McCormack.
Thank you so much. We will now move to public comment. I would, uh, remind all the council members to please turn around and acknowledge all of the speakers for public comment, and then I would, um, ask for all of the speakers in public comment to please look at the time that you have. When you see yellow, that means that's time to wrap it up. When you see red, that means it's a hard stop. First up, we have Alana Jones. She is from Dennison and West 25th. She's here to talk about Junior Civics 2.0 program, and she is representing CMSD Junior Civics 2.0 and not being paid by anyone. Is Alana Jones here? Alana Jones. Do we have Mrs. Jones? Mrs. Jones going once? Mrs. Jones going twice? Mrs. Jones is not here at this time. I'll move, uh, to the next person, which is Kareem Hinton. Mr. Hinton lives in Ward 14. He's here to talk about the topic of the Police Commission. He's representing Citizens for Safer Cleveland, and he is not being paid by anyone. Mr. Hinton, you have the floor.
Thank you for having me. You all, you all, or many here resisted the idea of defunding the police, but embrace defunding the community who oversees police. During the mayoral debate, Mayor Bibb said, "In the city, we have spent $30 million over the last 10 years settling police misconduct claims." He went on to say, "I believe Issue 24 is a positive step in the right direction to make sure we have more community voices around the table. Trust between residents and the police is critical to ensure that every community is safe and secure." Furthermore, Mayor Bibb went on to not only fund it, but to appropriate more funds to the Police Commission, because he knew launching this requires a lot of funding from legal consultants to retaining capable and experienced staff. But now that the mayor is elected, it appears that he has a change of heart. Councilman Blaine Griffith, Griffin, who has been against Issue 24 from the beginning, hasn't changed course, but is in fact maintaining it. He said the money is essentially being parked because it's required by the charter that this be budgeted. He went on to also say, "By the way, just because it's budgeted doesn't mean it has to be spent." He was telling us the plan all along. The way legislators get rid of things they don't want is by cutting funding. This is the way the government operates. Cleveland had a free clinic at one time on 79th that improved and saved many lives, including mine, but in spite of city charter, which allows funding for a free clinic, it was underfunded and then it ceased existing. You have to wonder who was behind that? Was it the Cleveland Clinic? Was it university hospitals? But what about residents? What about the hard work of getting it on the ballot and getting it passed? The money is needed, especially as they set up operations and defunding it, at least initially, will be catastrophic. Once again, residents who elected you all are going to get the opposite of what they asked for, but exactly what some politicians want, and this is exactly why this is likely the season, or rather, that the season is upon us, to start looking at term limits and recalls. Thank you.
Next, we have Brenda Bickerstaff. Ms. Bickerstaff is from Ward 6. She's here to talk about funding the Police Commission. She represents Citizens for Safer Cleveland, and she is not being paid by anyone. Ms. Bickerstaff, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. I did speak to Mr. Griffin today, he can attest that. I did get a copy of the budget from the CPC from Jason Goodrich. The other $224,000 would be for $100,000 a year for an attorney to be on staff. The other $50,000 is to pay for their benefit. The other monies that's left were paid for to hire someone to replace a staff member who has since left. The other money is to give raises, so that's what the $224,000 is for. Yes, this is true. The commission is still under training, they are, but they need a lawyer, a lawyer, a good lawyer, who don't care about the city of Cleveland, that would challenge them in every step of the way, that's going to give them good legal advice. They are not lawyers. They have to know and understand the GPOs. They have to be fair to police officers. Remember, we're dealing with two lives, the life of the citizen who's complaining and the career and the life of the officer. Both are important and both deserve to have equal chance to be heard. We cannot afford to have that defunded. So to me, it seems like, since council didn't want it from the very beginning, we only had one supporter, and that was Joe Jones, just one, and it seems to me, they want this commission to go away, even though 60% of the voters voted for this to hold these cops accountable. I don't understand where you guys are coming from. You know what's been going on. A lot of you may be new here, but a lot of you've been here for a while. You know what the police is capable of, and you still don't want them to be held accountable. I don't get it. I want the federal judge to be honest, to throw people in jail because they're not abiding by what he's saying that he wants them to do. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Brenda Walton, and she is from East 64th and St. Clair. She's here to talk about the development budget, and she represents Food, Not Bombs, Eastside Cleveland, and she is not being paid by anyone. Is Ms. Brenda Walton here? Ms. Brenda Walton? Ms. Brenda Walton going once? Ms. Brenda Walton going twice? I don't see Ms. Brenda Walton. Next, we have Robert Rice, uh, from Clark Fulton. He's here to talk about gentrification, and he represents the Greater Cleveland Housing Justice Coalition, and he is not being paid by anyone. Uh, Mr. Rice, please acknowledge your time.
Good evening and thank you. Peace and power, everybody. My name is Robert Rice, and I'm with the Greater Cleveland Housing Justice Coalition. For the past year, we have been organizing residents throughout Cleveland's east side, and recently, we have focused our attention on Ward 7. So far, we have canvassed between Way Park and Euclid, between East 79th and East 93rd, engaging with homeowners and tenants, hearing their concerns, providing resources and education, connecting them with legal support, and encouraging unionization. In the future, we'll be, we'll be inviting those we've engaged with to speak, but today, I'm here to give a report back on some of the concerns we have heard from residents, specifically around the area of East 90th and Chester. Homeowners express concerns around aggressive realtors harassing them to purchase their properties at pathetically low prices, to in turn flip them for profit. We've also heard concerns about those who have lost their homes due to not being able to pay their taxes or their utilities, sometimes under false charges, allowing developers to swoop in. Similarly, there are concerns about all the vacant lots in the neighborhood that they've, that they know won't be improved upon to their benefit and just become another addition for places such as Cleveland Clinic. We've also heard similar, uh, concerns at, uh, Ward 7 meetings. It is clear that the concerns around gentrification aren't abstract apprehensions of the future, but a real material reality that's infecting and displacing people and communities today. The current housing strategy of giving tax abatements to slum lords and building so-called affordable housing that starts at $800 to $1,000 while giving financial support and incentives to Cleveland Clinic employees and case students is unacceptable. It only further exacerbates settler colonialism and ethnic cleansing going on in the communities of Huff, Fairfax, Glenville, St. Clair Superior, et cetera. The city always complains about so-called out-of-state agitators, yet creates the breeding ground for out-of-town investors to completely take over our communities, let alone yuppies and hipsters turning vibrant, dynamic, and quite frankly, black communities into replicas of Ohio City, Tremont, and Detroit Shoreway, turning what was once dynamic into a monolithic cesspool of craft beer bars, coffee shops, and restaurants. Whenever the city speaks to economic revitalization, the only areas of focus are neighborhoods that are being gentrified, such as what I mentioned previously, or downtown creating a reverse migration between those who live in the inner city and those who live in the suburbs, yet then in turn complaining about poverty, lack of opportunities, crime, and safety, while continuing these reactionary practices. Instead, economic development must, uh, must include engagement with Ward residents and having said residents involved in development projects, and centering any sort of developments for the benefit of the current residents and not the people you're trying to replace them with. It is important to expand Cleveland's housing stock, but by creating housing that's actually affordable, as well as ending source of income discrimination and expanding resources for rental support. The time for true housing support and true housing equity is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Josiah Quarles. Mr. Quarles, uh, is from Cleveland Heights. He's here to talk about displacement of low-income residents, and he's with the United Residents of Euclid Beach, and he's not being paid by anyone. Mr. Quarles.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, Council. Good afternoon, Mayor. Um, thank you for everyone already who gave their testimony today. Uh, I'm coming here in this moment, um, because I feel that this is a moment, uh, that we can really, uh, wrap our hands around, wrap our minds around, and do something different. Um, we have kind of formulas, we have, um, modes that we operate in that we are comfortable with. Um, we have institutions that we are very comfortable with, and they have ways about going about their business that they are comfortable with. Um, unfortunately, a lot of the ways that they are comfortable with create very uncomfortable situations for the least of us. Um, currently, right now, uh, there are many people who are facing displacement. One of those places is Euclid Beach. Um, some of you may be aware of the situation there. That land was purchased by Western Reserve Land Conservancy, um, and just this past February 9th, uh, they decided, uh, along with, uh, a process, quote unquote, um, that was led by a consultant, to wipe out the entire park itself, um, remove all of its, uh, residents, and make it entirely a green space. Uh, we recognize the importance of green space, uh, but we also recognize the importance of people's homes, um, and people's livelihoods, and people's families, and people's community. And when we consistently destabilize different communities, um, for the sake of what an institution thinks is an opportunity, uh, what we create is, uh, further stresses on an already stressed housing system, further stresses on an already stressed, uh, safety net, and that safety net continually breaks. I see it every single day, and there are people who come to me and I cannot do anything for them, and it's heartbreaking. And there are 139 people who are currently residents of Euclid Beach, um, who will end up coming into this system, and I know, despite what is said about how much work will go into making their transition equitable, um, it's not going to happen, because that's not how this works. Uh, we do have an opportunity, however, to think differently, to invest differently. Um, we can create, uh, land trust that can actually hold dollars that can be delivered from the federal government, from the city government, from the state government, applied for grants. Communities can take ownership of their homes, of their land, and of their destiny, and all we are looking for is a partner. Uh, so I would ask that, uh, Councilman Polensic, as well as other, uh, councilmen and women here, as well as the greater community at large, stand up not just for Euclid Beach in this moment, but for residents across the city of Cleveland who deserve to determine their own future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Anthony Beard from Collinwood. He's here to talk about the displacement of low-income residents, and he's representing United Residents of Euclid Beach, and he's not being paid by anyone. Mr. Beard, you have the floor.
Good evening, Council. I am a member of the United Residents of Euclid Beach. We formed as a group to help us usher our way through uncharted waters of finding out that our community that we live in was going to be closed down. And so, I want to reach out and let everyone know that the residents of the Euclid Beach Mobile Community are not against the greening of the city of Cleveland, the greening of this area. We're not against it, but what we are against is a unfair and unrepresentative process whereby we were not included in the process, we were not heard in the process, and the process basically amounts to about 400 people within an unknown community filling out surveys that has an impact on over 100 people. And to this date, just to show you how surveys can go, we have a survey that has almost 10 times the number of citizens signed that is signed in our favor. And so, what it sounds like is that we have a case of, the gentleman back here talked about gentrification, we have a case now where it looks like it's green gentrification, where you're willing to put green space at the expense of people. And when you want to do something like that, it makes me think, I've been a resident of the city of Cleveland for almost 60 years. Outside of the time I was in the military, I'm an honorably discharged veteran, a combat expert field medic, and as I traveled around the world, I think about the city of Cleveland. I remember a time when they said, "New York is a big apple, but Cleveland's a plum." Cleveland is the forest city. I want to know what type of name do you want to have in your legacy for displacing over 100 citizens? What kind of name, what kind of name do you want city, Cleveland, to be known by? There's funds, as Josiah mentioned, available in the Price Act that was just passed, infrastructure that can help with this process, and I just want to leave with you today that this is the Lenten season, and during this time, there's a quote in the Book of Matthew that says, "Whatever you do, you do to the least of these..."
Time.
"...that you're doing to me." Thank you.
Next, we have Lava Shanay Morris from St. Clair, and she's here to talk about gun violence. She's representing Civics 2.0, and she is not being paid by anyone. Is Lava Shanay here? Lava Shanay? Lava Shanay going once? Lava Shanay going twice? I do not see Lava Shanay. Next, we have Latonya Goldsby from Cleveland. Uh, Latonya is, uh, here to talk about the Community Police Commission budget. She's representing Black Lives Matter Cleveland and Citizens for Safer Cleveland, and she is not being paid by anyone. Ms. Goldsby, you have the floor.
Yes. Uh, my name is Latonya Goldsby. I'm the president of Black Lives Matter Cleveland and co-founder and board member of Citizens for Safer Cleveland. Thank you. Um, I'm here today to encourage city council as a whole to approve the entire budget for the Cleveland Community Police Commission. It is imperative that this commission is fully funded to be able to hire extra staff and an attorney, should the commission need legal assistance or legal advice. The allocation is the first full budget for the commission, which would allow them to operate at total capacity. To cut the Community Police Commission's budget does a disservice to the community and to the residents of Cleveland who supported and voted for this commission. All too often, we, the residents, have seen city and public officials run on campaign promises to support the will of the people. Yet, when they get in office and are faced with pressure from their colleagues, they begin to retract from those campaign promises made to the people who voted them in office. This is taxation without representation. When the mayor supported Issue 24, Issue 24 supported the mayor, because this was the first time in Cleveland's history where the mayor and police accountability was on the ballot at the same time. Issue 24, now Charter Section 115, was created by the people for the people, because historically, there has been no accountability for law enforcement in the city of Cleveland. It has taken residents 100 years to get to this point, to begin the process of transformative police reform, and this body wants to cut its budget. When the city of Cleveland or city council doesn't support something, they say there's no funding for it, or they cut its budget, yet none of their discretionary funds were cut to make up for city budget shortages. What happened to all the COVID money the city received? City council has been a stumbling block to progress made in this city. This is why citizens have taken action through ballot measures and charter amendments to begin the process of transforming our local government structure. Mayor Bibb said Cleveland can't wait, and he was right. Cleveland residents can't wait until we have a sitting council that listens to the needs of this community, that actually, that actually follows through on the promises they made when seeking our vote. We can't wait to have a council that understands the need for the Community Police Commission to be fully funded to address the decades of police violence endured by Cleveland residents. We can't wait to have a council that believes in police accountability and true democracy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Bethany Studenek, and Bethany is from Ward 17. She's here to talk about the Commission on Black Women and Girls. She represents Enlightened Solutions, and she is being paid by someone. Bethany, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bethany Studenek, and I am the co-founder and managing director of Enlightened Solutions. Tonight, I want to start with an important point on the future of our city and intersectionality. Uh, Gen Z is the most diverse generation in American history. 48% are racially and ethnically diverse. 33% are LGBTQ, and for folks under 18, there is no longer a racial majority in America. Cleveland should be a major economic attractor. We have a rich civil rights history, affordable relatively, housing costs, and, uh, freshwater access during a looming housing crisis and climate crisis, but instead of growing, we are continuing to lose population. When Cleveland think, when people think about moving to Cleveland, they hear that we are highly segregated and redlined, that black women and babies are dying at an incredible rate, and that we are the worst city in America for black women. The reality is simple. Cleveland will never move on, we will never thrive, until we confront our culture of exclusion. We believe that by focusing on black women, we can build a thriving city, because when black women are thriving, people like me are going to be thriving too. We're here tonight to pass, to ask you to impanel the commissioners for the Cleveland Commission on Black Women and Girls urgently. Over the past year, Chi Chi and I have been asked virtually every day how progress is going and where we're at. Over the past year, the tone has slowly changed. It's turned from "How can I help and what's going on?" to "Is this still happening?" Black women have been advocating for this for over a year. They've been down here multiple times, they've made phone calls, they've thrown their own events, they've participated in our research, and we're here a year later asking you to please take this next step. Part of what I'd like to ask you is to reflect on why this particular piece of legislation has taken over a year to take the first step. Next, there are multiple barriers. We still have to have a budget, we still have to have an investment, we still have to set goals, we have to onboard commissioners. There's so much to do, and we haven't really even taken the first step. So I really urge you to get this, uh, completed, to get our commissioners impaneled so that we can get to work. I take calls from people every day that are struggling in this city. Every day that you wait is another day where we lose progress. Thanks.
Thank you. That's the end of public comment. Madam Clerk, can you please share? Madam Clerk, can you please share communications?
File number 318-2023, from Wesley Finch, the Finch Group. Notice of intent to apply to Ohio Housing Finance Agency for multifamily funding programs for the development known as Hitchcock Center for Women in Treatment and Recovery Housing at 1227 Ansel Row, Ward 9. File number 295-2023, dedication plat for proposed dedications of extensions of Frank Avenue and of Hudson Avenue between East 101st and East 105th, Ward 6. From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. File number 296-2023, regarding a new license application at 4595 Turney Road, Ward 2.
Condolence resolutions.
Resolutions of condolence by Councilmember Gray for Eleanor Lorraine Menefield; by Councilmember Griffin for Eileen Rose Fenton; by Councilmember Casey for Patricia Ann Kilbane; by Councilmember Polensick for Mary Alice Patterson.
Are there any other condolence resolutions? Councilman Kerry McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if this was put forth last week, but can you please hold out a number for Reverend George Herbeck?
Thank you. We did have one last week, but please make sure that we add Councilman Kerry McCormick. Councilman Joseph Jones.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that you also put a number out for Sharice Mitchell.
Thank you. Are there any other? Councilman Richard Starr.
Give me hold out a number for Ms. Janita Carr.
Councilwoman Jenny Spencer.
Thank you. Please hold out a number for Phyllis Seltzer.
Thank you. Seeing no more condolence resolutions, can everyone please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. Madam Clerk, please share congratulatory resolutions.
Resolutions of congratulations by Councilmember Griffin for Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority on their 92nd Regional Conference; by Councilmember Griffin for Nikki's Music Complex; by Councilmember Griffin for Robert L. Hubbard Jr.; by Councilmember Griffin for India Pierce Lee; by Councilmember Griffin for Arab American Bar Association; by Councilmember Griffin for Kentucky State University Choir; by Councilmember Griffin for Bruce Robert Dennis; by Councilmember House for Dorothy Jones on her 101st birthday; by Councilmembers Moore, Gray, House, Santana, and Spencer for Cleveland Building Tradeswomen; by Councilmember Polensick for Cleveland Chemical Pest Control; by Councilmember Polensick for Brendan Thomas Quinlan; by Councilmember Slyf for Kay Kelly Hancock; by Councilmember Slyf for Helen C. Malloy; by Councilmember Starr for Stella Maris. Resolutions of recognition by Councilmember Griffin for Teen Lift Program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We now have presentations, and I'm going to ask if Councilwoman Moore can join me up front, and then if the rest of the colleagues can open up the well for her guest that she's presenting proper presentation for. The women of council, can you join us as well as any of the other women in construction, if they could? Any other women on council, if you could join us?
Okay, come over here. You can bring us around here. Thank you so much this evening. I'm so honored to stand alongside the Cleveland Tradeswomen Committee. The members of City Council are extremely proud to note that the Cleveland Building Tradeswomen are celebrating Women in Construction Week, March 5th through March 11th, 2023, highlighting women as a viable component of the construction industry. And in particular, I have behind me incredible women such as Doreen Cannon, a retired union plumber with nearly three decades of experience. I might be calling you next time. I have an issue at my house. And she couldn't join us tonight, but Darlene Glass, who is a valued Ward 12 resident, an incredible tradeswoman. And for instance, some of their volunteer work includes making desperately needed repairs to our Women and Children shelters here in Cleveland. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Doreen to share a little bit about the committee and your work. And we want to say thank you for everything that you do for Cleveland.
Thank you. Thank you to council for this honor. We're very happy to be here. I have an operating engineer, an electrician, and a pipe fitter, and myself up here. And everybody, it's really important to understand that these are amazing careers for women. These are careers that bring women out of poverty. They're great union jobs. They have great training behind them. So it's really important to promote to women because these careers are available to them, and they're really great careers. So on behalf of all the Cleveland Tradeswomen who help build this city every day with their boots on, in the mud, in the cold, I really thank you for this honor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Congratulations. Thank you, Councilwoman Moore, and thank you so much to all of the women in construction. Madam Clerk, please share first reading. Emergency ordinances referred for administrative review and committee review.
Ordinance 280-2023, by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request. Authorizing the Director of Public Works to apply for and accept a grant from the Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District for Cuyahoga County Solid Waste District Special Project. Ordinance 281-2023, by Councilmember Griffin. Authorizing the clerk of council to enter into an agreement with iVideo for the professional services necessary to permanently install in council chambers a video production system for broadcasting and streamlining meetings for Cleveland City Council. Ordinance 282-2023, by Councilmembers Griffin, Bishop, and Hairston by departmental request. Authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to enter into a maintenance, inspection, and repair agreement with and to issue a permit to the Cleveland Clinic Foundation to encroach into the public right-of-way above East 89th Street by constructing, installing, using, and maintaining an overhead pedestrian bridge. Ordinance 283-2023, by Councilmembers McCormack and Griffin by departmental request. Authorizing the Director of Port Control to enter into various written standard purchase and requirement contracts for the purchase of de-icing chemicals for the Division of Airports, Department of Port Control for a period of two years with two one-year options to renew, exercisable by the Director of Port Control. Ordinance 284-2023, by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request. Authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts for the transfer and disposal of tires for the Division of Waste Collection and Disposal, Department of Public Works, for a term of two years. Ordinance 293-2023, by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request. Determining the method of making the public improvement of mechanical and facade improvements to City Hall. Authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to enter into one or more contracts for the making of the improvement. Ordinance 294-2023, by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. To supplement the codify ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio by enacting new Section 129.231 relating to the purchase of food and beverages for the Department of Public Utilities. Ordinance 297-2023, by Councilmembers Griffin and Santana. To supplement the codify ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio by enacting new Chapter 191A, Sections 191A.01 through 07, related to community benefits agreements. Ordinance 298-2023, by Councilmember Griffin. Authorizing the submission to the electors of the city of Cleveland of a proposal to amend Section 167 of the Charter of the City of Cleveland relating to public improvements.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First reading. Emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance 285-2023, by Councilmembers Gray and Starr. Amending the title in Sections 1 and 2 of Ordinance 1109-2021. Authorizing the Director of Department of Community Development to enter into an agreement with Burton Bell Car Development for the food distribution program through the use of casino revenue funds and repealing Ordinance 42-2023, passed January 9th, 2023. Ordinance 286-2023, by Councilmember Moore. Authorizing the Director of Department of Economic Development to enter into agreement with Andreoli Properties for the Andreoli Restoration Studies Project through the use of Ward 12 Casino Revenue Funds. Ordinance 287-2023, by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request. Approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Ohio Nurses Association and to amend Section 24 of Ordinance 194-2021 as amended relating to compensation for various classifications. Ordinance 288-2023, by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request. Approving the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local 507 and to amend Section 16 of Ordinance 194-2021 as amended relating to compensation for various classifications.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember House, that the reading of the minutes of the last meeting be dispensed with a journal approved, seconded by Councilmember McCormack.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormack, Polensick, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. 15 yays.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormack, Polensick, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. 16 yays.
Call to roll on passage, Madam Clerk.
That was it.
That was it? Okay. First reading. Emergency ordinances. Emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution 289-2023, by Councilmember Starr. Objecting to the transfer of ownership of a D5, D6 liquor permit to 3403 Croton Avenue. Resolution 290-2023, by Councilmember Starr. Objecting to the transfer of ownership of a C1, C2 liquor permit to 5611 Woodland Avenue, Unit A. Resolution 291-2023, by Councilmember Moore. Withdrawing objection to the transfer of stock of a C1, C2 liquor permit at 2202 Broadview Road and repealing Resolution 1112-2021, objecting to said transfer. Resolution 292-2023, by Councilmember Jones. Withdrawing objection to a new C2 liquor permit at 14302 Harvard Avenue and repealing Resolution 221-2022, objecting to said permit.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember House, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage. Seconded by Councilmember McCormack.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormack, Polensick, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. 16 yays.
Call to roll on adoption.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormack, Polensick, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. 16 yays.
Thank you. Second reading. Emergency ordinances.
Ordinance 183-2023 as amended, by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request. To make appropriations and provide current expenses for the daily operation of all municipal departments of the city of Cleveland for the fiscal year from January 1, 2023 until December 31, 2023.
Thank you. Second reading. Emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance 36-2023, by Councilmembers McCormack and Griffin by departmental request. Authorizing, excuse me, the Director of Port Control to exercise the first option to renew a contract with MV Companies to provide automotive parts to repair vehicles, including labor, materials, and installation. Ordinance 117-2023 as amended, by Councilmembers Bishop, Griffin, and Gray by departmental request. Authorizing the Director of Public Works to enter into one or more qualified management agreements with the Highland Park Golf Foundation and Ohio Nonprofit Corporation for professional services to manage, operate, and improve the Highland Park Golf course and surrounding landscape for the Division of Recreation, Department of Public Works, for a period up to 30 years and authorizing the Director to apply for and accept any gifts, grants, or services from any public or private entity. Ordinance 181-2023, by Councilmembers Spencer, Bishop, and Griffin by departmental request. Accepting the offer of dedication of public right-of-way and public improvements shown on the recorded plat for Father Caruso Drive. Ordinance 182-2023, by Councilmembers Spencer, Bishop, and Griffin by departmental request. Authorizing the Director of Public Works to apply for and accept a grant from the National Park Service or its designee for the purpose of developing a new city park to be located near the Clark Recreation Center and to apply for and accept additional grants and gifts for the new park. Ordinance 187-2023, by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request. Authorizing the Director of Public Works to employ one or more professional consultants to provide security services for various indoor and outdoor recreation facilities, including but not limited to recreation centers, outdoor pools, and various surrounding play areas for a period not to exceed one year.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember House, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage. Seconded by Councilmember McCormack.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormack, Polensick, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. 16 yays.
Call to roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormack, Polensick, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr.
Please record to be known on 11/7.
Please record. Councilman Polensick, know on 11/7.
So noted.
Thank you. Okay.
11/7, 2023 is 15 yays, 1 nay. All others... I'm sorry? Oh, all the rest are 16 yays.
Okay. All right. Call to roll on passage? Do we do that? Okay. Second reading. Emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution 257-2023, by Councilmembers Harsh, Jones, Bishop, McCormack, Gray, Starr, Griffin, House, Polensick, Conwell, Hairston, Kelly, Moore, Santana, Spencer, Casey, and Slyf. Calling upon the Bibb administration to file suit against Kia and Hyundai to recover costs incurred by the city associated with the rash of thefts of stolen vehicles.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
By Councilmember House, that the rules be suspended and the legislation just read be placed on final passage. Seconded by Councilmember McCormack.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormack, Polensick, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. 17 yays.
Call to roll on adoption.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormack, Polensick, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. 17 yays.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now go to introductions, and I always want to start off by acknowledging a couple of good people that are here to support the Community Benefits Ordinance 297 and 298-2023. I want to acknowledge Arianne Kirkpatrick, one of the best business people in our city. If she could please stand. I want to acknowledge Arianne Kirkpatrick, if we could. Please stand, give her a round of applause. Arianne's a private contractor and she also, um, has become a leader in the cultivation, um, cultivation, grow, and dispensary in, uh, the cannabis industry. So she's doing a, a great job on several business fronts. Um, I also want to always acknowledge my good friend who really was instrumental in helping us around developing the Community Benefits Ordinance, Chris Nance, if he could please stand, Chris Nance? Thank you. Chris is with the Greater Cleveland Partnership, so I wanted to make sure I acknowledge him and the Greater Cleveland Partnership as a partner with us. And then, uh, anybody else? Any other introductions? Any other introductions? I'll introduce Kate from the, uh, Police Commission. If Kate could please stand, Kate from the Police Commission? She used to be a proud War Six member, but then she moved over to that other part of town on us, so we'll still give her a pass. Uh, any other introductions? Any other introductions? Seeing no other introductions, uh, are there any announcements? Any announcements? Any announcements? Seeing no announcements, is there any miscellaneous? Any miscellaneous? Councilman Kevin Conwell, miscellaneous?
Thank you very much. I want to thank Commander Johnson. I want to thank the, uh, the mayor. Um, it's been going on several, for several days in the, uh, at Glenville High School, Stephanie Tub Jones, um, school, as well as at FDR. And you know about the, uh, the break-ins of the Kias and the Hyundais and we couldn't even get substitute teachers to come to teach our children at these three, um, schools, Glenville, Patrick, not Stephanie Tub Jones, now, Councilman, Stephanie Tub Jones, as well as FDR. But, um, what Commander Johnson did, I want to thank him and his people, they started, uh, matter of fact, they arrested a young man in connection with that. And, um, so I want to thank him. We also, um, council president, council and the mayor, we met last week, um, Wednesday at Glen Village, the we, CMSD Security, as well as, um, CPD Police and the vanguards came to the meeting as well. We met from two to four o'clock and we discussed systems and strategies on how to make life better for the, um, teachers and the people that live and work, um, at Glenville High School, Stephanie Tub Jones, and FDR. What we're going to do, um, Mr. Mayor, is your police department, they will circle the exterior and they'll visit and they'll stop by the schools so that we can have visible and they will be more and more visible in that area so that people will be able to see it. Um, CMSD Security, I have to talk with them, they need to do walks. Like you do manager walks in, in the neighborhood, I mean, manager walks, they need to walk around the schools so that, um, people will see that we're watching what's going on in that area. Also, the teachers, we're going to talk with them on, um, the fourteenth of this month at, at FDR about putting their merchandise and their junk in the trunk and not leave their junk out so when people pass by their vehicles that, um, it would just be out there because we need to help with that. We also, and that meeting will be at FDR from three PM to four PM. So the teachers got to know that we care about them, that they're not out there bowling alone by themselves. Uh, at Glenville the following day, on the fifteenth of February, CMSD Security will be there as well as, uh, CPD, Cleveland Police Department. Uh, I will be there and we're going to talk, as well as the teachers' union as well. And we're going to put systems and strategies together in place so that, so that the teachers would know they're not out there bowling alone by themselves. We care, we care. You know, I told, um, a lot of the key stakeholders, the city council care about the teachers as well as the, uh, you, Mr. President, as well as you, Mr. Mayor, we discussed that. So we will be there. There's another piece, let me put this piece aside. Um, Senate Bill one, Senate Bill one, uh, um, Star, we went down to Columbus to discuss this. That is a dangerous, dangerous bill. That bill is dangerous. What the Republicans are doing, as well as the governor, they're making a power grab move with our schools and the state school board. If this bill succeed, the governor will take the school district and put it under his own administration and the governor will control the curriculum and the money too. So we as council members, the key stakeholders in the community must get down there. Now, it's been transferred over to the House, but they need to see that we care and we will fight them tooth and nail. Because if it goes over to the governor, he would do just like DeSantis, as he would come at us dealing with, um, stopping us from teaching African-American history. He will also deal with, um, um, dealing with the LGBTQ community plus. You don't let them get over to the governor's office, then we start marching. We go down there right now and we battle it right now. We don't wait until it happens. Because that's exactly what he's going to do. And then people are going to sit and say they're not teaching African-American history or they're not teaching things because they will control it. They will control it. You voted to put people on the state school board. It's our votes and we got to stop him right now. It's going to the State House, Mr. President, and we need to be there. And this man Starr was down there, we were down there together last week. We had it at Gridlock and then another Republican came in and she voted against us, but we said, we're not going to stop this. So I'm, I reached out to the teachers' union to help with this so that they can talk with people around the state. And they can talk with other teachers so that we can have partners and key stakeholders. This thing to be all on deck. I don't want to be sitting up here after the fact and talking about it. You got to fight now and they got to know that you're going to fight. One thing about the Republicans, they mean business. And when they want to punch things in, they'll do it right now. And they take care of their business right now. The Democrats, we sit back and we wait. We wait and then we cry and then we march. We'll march down to Columbus. You march down to Columbus to fight them against this. And I say this again, this is a dangerous, dangerous, dangerous bill. So thank you very much for listening. I, I'm going to be down there and I'm going to battle against it. And matter of fact, what I'm going to do also, matter of fact, I'm going to do it tonight, is write a letter to my residents, let them know, to call their, their state representatives and call not only Upchurch, but called all the state representatives to let them know how we feel. And I'm walking door to door with my people and we will be out there in the community just dropping literature, letting, letting them know what's going on and to make the phone calls. Do not let them take over our children's schools. Kids need to see you out there fighting for them. They want to know that you will fight for them. And that's our job. We live through our children. We live through our children. We got to fight for them. And we can't let this happen. We can't let this power grab move happen. You know, and I saw you telling him to tell me to be quiet about that. This is serious. This is serious, man.
You got the floor, Councilman.
All right. This is serious. You know, I mean, I'm going to go down there and fight for this and we need other people to help. This is a serious matter. Thank you very much.
First of all, Councilman, thank you so much. And just to let all the body knows, I always, if a council member asks for extra time, I usually give them extra time. And, um, I do want to applaud Councilmen, uh, Conwell and Starr for going down and lobbying the State House. Councilman Joseph Jones has also asked for, uh, some extra time. Councilman Jones.
I don't know, Mr. President, if I'll take it, but I just want you guys to give my colleagues a great big round of applause. They went downstate to fight on our behalf. Yeah, clap for them all. Because let me say something, it's, it's, it's always good to be where you are fighting on issues. But at the end of the day, this council that you see before you is seventeen members and two-thirds of which are elected representation of new members. So the majority of the council, two-thirds of them right now as you see them, are new members that have been elected. So the citizens of the city of Cleveland are doing their job. And they're doing it because two-thirds of these, it's only four people here that's been sitting here in this council for the last five years. So of the last five years, you only got four of them and now you got a new council president and, and that's it. So the citizens are doing what they're supposed to do, voting their folks in. Now, some people may not like the decisions all the time that are made because sometimes I don't like the decisions neither. But this is what this thing of democracy is called. And I'm, I'm actually excited to, to be sitting with new members of Cleveland City Council. Now, I'd like to sit where Richard Starr is at because he's got the best seat in the House. And that used to be my old seat. And Fannie Lewis used to sit at your seat. But let me tell you what it's really all about at the end of the day, people. It's about how we serve. And how we serve matters. And I heard some issues here today that are significant and important that we pick up and we deal with them as a government. We can't be so big that we can't hear the cries of the people. We can't be so big as an institution that we don't get down nitty-gritty into the streets and understand the situations as they come. Because guess what? If you don't get there and be limber enough, then you're going to see yourself out of office. Because these citizens will vote. They will vote because they want to see good streets with great service. They're going to vote you out if they don't feel safe in their neighborhoods and their communities. And we could talk about this, that, and the other, but we need to stick to the basics, what works. And what works when it comes to safety in our communities is having police, community policing. And community policing is not a difficult proper, proper, of, of a dip, a difficult proposition to make. It's about having those police officers every day in your neighborhood doing a couple of things. Traffic enforcement. We've gotten away from that. We were a city that had a hundred and sixty-five thousand tickets when I was serving way back in the day of two thousand, nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, grouping of council members. To now, we're lucky if we go over twenty-two thousand tickets. So when it comes to police visibility, we have the police right now to do it. We need to start looking at how we do that. And it's going to be incumbent upon the administration to give us a policing plan that's going to help us keep our community safe. It's going to be upon, incumbent upon the council, and I use the term and some of our members got mad about it, it's called culpability. We're culpable. We're the legislators. So whatever the administration is doing, if we don't have the gonosh, I think that's a safe term for the woke people, if we don't have the gonosh to stand up and say what we believe in and fight for it, and yes, it's going to be difficult because the executive and the legislative branch may not always agree upon something. But when you're in that neighborhood and you represent your people, then you got to be able to stand up on the issues and fight for it. Right is right and wrong is wrong. So I'd like to see, when we did this budget, more police visibility. Now, we were promised that when we get that plan, I want to see that plan. I want to see that visibility because I stand on it. Bickerstaff said one thing, Joe Jones stood up for the commission, yes. Because I remember the time when I was a little boy in the Democratic Party and the year was nineteen eighty-eight and I was in the twenty-first Congressional District Caucus Congressman Louis Stokes and the Cleveland Police sold crack cocaine and drugs to the African-American community for raising funds for a sting operation down in Florida. It was a big thing during the day. And so having a commission in place in terms of accountability is important for policing. But I'll tell you also, and I brought this issue up and people say, oh, no, we shouldn't do that. Oh, oh, it's not, we shouldn't do it. We need to raise the age of having police officers be eighteen years of age in order to bring more police on in the city of Cleveland. And this is a proposition I talked about and some folks say, you know, you shouldn't do it. Well, Israel is doing it. Israel is mandatory that you serve in its military if you're eighteen, whether you have a record or whether you don't. So if you got a record, you can still serve in their military. We see in other governments across the planet that have low crime. They got young folks. I can't run as fast as I did when I was nineteen or eighteen. So we need to have young people hired onto the police office in, in, in uniform. I'm glad to see that the state legislature is looking at that and changing that. That's an idea I talked about on this floor of council some years back. And so just as smart cities get smart and we're still putting quarters in the meter, other cities have moved to smart technology and they no longer feed quarters in, into their meters because they were smart enough and they, they've gotten off that ten years ago. We're still stuck and we're moving too slow. So let's get with it. And, and Kerry McCormack, I know the guy who introduced you to smart city concepts, talked to him in the office today. And so we have to bring smart technology, we have to think outside the box. If we're going to get the city of Cleveland moving and moving fast and moving forward, we have to get up and do our work. But I am proud of this council and I'm proud of this administration. I'm honored to have the opportunity to serve as councilman. And as long as I stand here on this floor, I'm going to tell you like it is, whether you like it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to reiterate to the council members that I did extend, um, a couple of the members asked for extended time today, Councilman Conwell and Councilman Jones. But I want to reel us back in that it's really important for us to adhere to the four-point, uh, the four-minute limit. Um, and we always want to be considerate of other council members. Because it was only two members, I did afford you the opportunity for some extra time, but I would encourage council members to stay within their four-minute limit, uh, so that we can make sure that we keep things in, uh, in good order. Um, I also want to commend, um, my colleagues. We introduced, uh, two ninety-seven and two ninety-eight dash two thousand and three. There'll be several hearings. Um, I really will encourage, I'll be, uh, joining with Chairman Hairston on hosting several different constituency groups, but I believe this is one of the most important ordinances, um, as we outline diversity, equity, and inclusion as a priority for this council. Uh, we've made sure that the departments are staffed up and we're going to make sure that now we have an ordinance in place in order to ensure diversity, equity, and inclusion on the front end of small and big projects. So I really encourage all of my colleagues to read that ordinance, get very involved in, uh, how we move it forward because we believe it's a very important piece of legislation. I want to commend all of the staff, especially Jennifer O'Leary, who, uh, really was the legislative person, and then, uh, Jessica Columbia and Brooke Saban and all of the team that really worked on pulling this together. Um, so, um, Abel, Abel Coon and everybody else. Um, I think it's a very dynamic piece and another defining piece of our, um, four years in council. I also want to commend this body, uh, for diligently really taking a hard look at the budget and making some very tough and hard decisions. Uh, this body still has to, um, have the responsibility of oversight, of budgeting and policy. And, um, because we made some very critical decisions on the budget, I believe that now we can move to the oversight part. Uh, we do know that, uh, for those in the listening audience, uh, we will have a chance in order to look at, um, uh, any potential carryover if any positions are not filled. And then as we do a transfer ordinance, as we see what departments and other departments need at that time, then we can try to make some more decisions. I've instructed all of the chairs to really look at your staffing plans, uh, for all of the departments so that we can have a better understanding of staffing and deployment for the administration. But I want to thank all of you. I think that, uh, this was one of the more invigorating budget conversations that, um, has taken place in a long time. And, uh, due to you, I think that the people's budget will be, uh, right on point. So with that being said, Madam Clerk, please excuse the absences. All right, there are no absences. Therefore, council is adjourned to the next regular meeting on March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.